Okay, it is now six thirty-four. I'm gonna call this meeting in Laundale City Council to order. It's now six thirty-four. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give the roll call.
Okay. Mayor Protem Cuevas?
Present.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm gonna ask the Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and... Do we have a minister today? Okay. Father Minister Harrison will lead us in a word of inspiration.
Thank you. Place your right hand over your heart and recite along with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Oh, my God, we thank you for our time together. We thank you for this building that we might be able to gather and hear the things of the city and that we can participate in government, both by our elected officials and by the public who is able to be here and that this is a free country where people can come and be a part of the democratic process. We thank you that we can hold our leaders accountable and we can watch them and we can make sure that they're doing as we voted. But we also thank you that they are able to make these decisions and we're able to have the laws that we have today that allow them to just give us direction, give them direction tonight that as they come across different things on their agenda, that they might be able to come together with one mind, that they might be doing things for the best of the community, best interest of the community and that if there are outside interests, that they would be stayed and this would be a time when we focus on Laundale. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, for those words of inspiration. Okay. Okay, let's have our public safety update. Yes, sir. Let's hear from LA County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm here to present the public safety report for February 6th through the 21st, which was today. Deputies assigned at the Laundale Service Center made approximately twenty-five arrests for narcotics and narcotics paraphernalia during the reporting period for this month. At the same time, there were approximately five catalytic converter thefts from parked vehicles that were parked on the road. And catalytic converter thefts are on the rise. And I want to take this moment to encourage the council and members of the public to report suspicious activity and be vigilant in their neighborhoods and let the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department know of anything that needs to come to our attention. Deputies during this time also conducted approximately one hundred and fifty traffic enforcement stops. They responded to approximately thirty calls of traffic collisions in the area and they issued approximately fifteen citations for various vehicle violations during that period. And lastly, I've received calls and complaints regarding graffiti within the neighborhood and the vandalism, use other people's property to express a message nobody has consented to. I reached out to several people regarding these vandalisms and each of them reported that the city is quick to respond and clean it up. So I told them to call us first and then the city, so that way we can document it properly. And the documentation will prevent, will hopefully prevent it from occurring in the future and that way we can stay vigilant on the issue. This concludes my report. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay, Councilwoman.
I have a question. I was, it was my understanding that there was already coordination with graffiti when there is a property tagged and then it was reported to the sheriffs. Is that not?
That hasn't, that has not been my experience. My experience has been that they usually report it to the city. They just called the city to clean it up and the city comes and cleans it up. As a matter of fact, I was called on one specifically and then I went out there to look at it and by the time I got out there, the city cleaned it up. And that was like, what, thirty minutes? I got the call like thirty minutes, I was out there and it was already gone. So I can certainly coordinate with the municipal services to kind of better, to better get that coordinated so we work in tandem together for it.
I can address that a little bit too, if it pleases the council. So the, my understanding is it's actually gonna be Ahmad's department, but my understanding is Public Works will take photos of the paint before they take it down and then it's loaded up to the H drive, so it's available to the sheriffs to see. So I can let Sergeant Smith know about that in case he's unaware. But yeah, all the photos are taken of the graffiti boards taken now.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. If you guys can coordinate that, that'd be great.
I'll do it. Yes, sir. On some of the vandalism, did you get the report on the BB gun shooting down from Mona? Were those ten individual cars got their back driver's side windows shot out?
Yeah, I personally reviewed three of those reports and my understanding at the time, the three that I reviewed, there was no workable information on them. But if there is, and it wasn't brought forward at the time during the first investigation, whoever has it can come forward to me and I'll make sure it gets handed over to the detective.
Well, there's a couple cameras. I'll come over and talk to you. I'll call you tomorrow about the cameras there.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I have one question. Seeing that our catalytic converters are still an issue this far out, is there anything that the city or the sheriffs could lead us to, to have like one of those etching? One of the clinics where we can have residents come and have their catalytic converters etched? And I don't know if my question is to you or to Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. We looked into that. I guess there was a cost associated with that, some liability. We have to find a place. Lieutenant Osborne looked into that a few months back. They're running a tow truck and then staff that are willing to get under the vehicle and do the etchings and things like that in nature. That was last where Lieutenant Osborne left it off at.
Thank you for that info. And then other thing is, are, can we at the next council meeting also get an idea of how many sites are being written on the Boulevard for loud mufflers? Loud mufflers seem to be an issue on the Boulevard and we're supposed to be citing on those as well. So I'd like to hear the status on how we're doing on that.
Certainly. I'll have that for you next week, two weeks.
Okay, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, now we're on oral communications. Oral communications where you have the opportunity to speak to this board on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. We ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you would come to the podium, if you would start with your name first. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on that'll give you the signal to start wrapping up your comments. Let's have our first speaker. Yes, ma'am. Madam Librarian, how are you?
Hello, everyone. My name is Michelle Pena from Laundale Library and I'm just here just to remind the community that we are still having COVID-19 antigen tests available. Anytime the library is open, you guys can grab. There's no limit and it's open for everybody. Also, we are looking for the month of May of having some computer classes for seniors. So our next meeting, I'll have more information to set up the dates for that, so we're looking forward to that as well. And again, invite everyone to join our book club, which is once a month, we have a book club for kids, teens and adults. You can come to the library, pick up some flyers and all that information will be on there if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this body under oral communications? CNN, we will close oral communications, bring up the dials for any comments, if there be any. Anyone wants to speak?
Thank you, Michelle, for giving us the information and I love the fact that we're having senior computer classes. In my line of business, one of the biggest issues are seniors trying to learn how to Zoom. So any help that can be given on teaching how to Zoom would be absolutely wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir. And I'll just say diddle and pass it on.
The same, pass it on.
The same. Thank you for your service to our community and to the library. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. There's one, two, three, four, five, six. I don't know why I count them, because it clearly says six, but six items on the consent calendar. Is there a question? I have a question. Are we gonna go with your appointments to planning, parks and rec and personnel? If so, if yes. Okay, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar as written. Okay.
I'll second it.
So there's been a motion that we accept the consent calendar, including the appointments to the planning, commission, Parks and Recs and Personnel Board. The motion was made by Kearney and seconded by Suarez. And there's any discussion on the motion?
Yep.
Okay, will the council please vote? Do you have people in the audience that were gonna be on the board, Robert? Yeah, I have two new members. Hold on, let me figure out how to vote first. No, we're gonna sign Mr. Kearney up for it. We're gonna sign him up for the computer class.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
So I have two new commissioners in the audience. If they would like to come to the podium just to say hello, just say, "Bye." You know, come on, just to give you experience, because you're gonna be on the mic when you, on your commission thing. Just give us your name and just, you know, one line, you know, you don't have to give a dissertation. Parks and Recs.
Oh, I'm Joanne Loussa and I'm just very excited to be an active participant here in the community and just do all the knowledge and experience that I have to incorporate in this commission. So thank you for having me.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you for willing to participate in our community. We appreciate your service. Yes, ma'am. How are you?
Hi. Hello, my name is Anna Maria Grisales. I have been in the community for a while now and I've been wanting to create a proactive collaboration with everyone, so I'm excited to be here. Thank you so much for the opportunity and I hope we can do great things for our community.
Absolutely. Thank you. John, you're not doing it. We know you, John. You can say a few words anyway.
And happy to serve in any capacity. I've been on the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission and the Personnel Board and I'm happy to continue to serve in any small way that I can. The city's been terrific and we're gonna continue to improve, I know. And we're doing very well here.
And we thank you for your service on the Personnel Board these years.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good friendly people up there.
Thank you. Then we have Scott over there. We also have an old lad in the, is there such thing as old lad? Old lad, Planning Commissioner returning, Mr. Scott. Thank you, Scott. Thank you for your service on the Planning Commission, Mr. Commissioner. Okay, so that would be that. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. A public hearing for consideration of resolution as such amending administrative citation fees and ordinances. Let's have the staff report.
Mr. Mayor and council, we're gonna, we're requesting the council a recommendation that the council continue this public hearing to the next meeting of March 20, 2023.
Okay, should I, would you recommend that I open it up and then continue?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, it is six forty-eight. This public hearing is now open. Let's have a motion to continue this public hearing. I'll make a motion to continue.
I'll second it.
Item number seven, alert number seven. Okay, so the motion made by Kearney that we continue the public hearing and seconded by Hoffman-Gorman that we continue the public hearing to, what's the date again? To March 20th. All those in favor, well, just go accordingly. You need my computer. It's a Tuesday, ladies and gentlemen. We usually, we're on our A game on Mondays, on Tuesdays. Right, right, right. We don't use our fingers on Tuesdays.
For item number seven, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, it is now six forty-eight and this public hearing is, it's not adjourned.
It's continued.
But it's continued, continued. Thank you so much.
Oh, introduce our city attorney for tonight.
Hi, nice to meet you, everybody. Again, I've been here one other time. My name is Stephanie Gutierrez. I work with Greg Murphy from Burke Williams &amp; Sorensen and it's a pleasure to be here again today.
Thank you for being here tonight. Next item on the agenda is also a public hearing for consideration of ordinance number eleven ninety-seven dash twenty-three to amend certain sections of, it's long, chapter twelve point zero eight, title twelve, Laundale Municipal Code to establish encroachment permits for major improvement projects. Let's have staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Thanks for the opportunity to present this item. This is also a public hearing item. So in way of background, my understanding is that since 2020, there has been considerable discussion regarding updating the requirements of the encroachment permits, you know, for a variety of different projects. This particular item, before you specifically updates and adds requirements to the encroachment permit for what's called MIP, which is major improvement projects that might be coming to the city. So I'm gonna divide it into three distinct areas. You know, one has to do with the fee adjustment and proposal. The second is to take care of any impacted existing infrastructure, publicly owned infrastructure within the city, whether it is repair, build new and so forth. And then the third category would be the infrastructure that is not publicly owned but pervaded by perhaps UTT companies. And then the last would be a maintenance agreement with the major improvement project applicant for some sort of short-term maintenance, long-term maintenance, so that it relieves the city from long-term costs of maintenance to those projects. So the staff has drafted ordinance number eleven ninety-seven dash twenty-three. Specifically, your staff report talks about proposing, in the first category, proposing ten thousand dollars. This is basically to recover staff time, you know, to analyze the application, the scope of the major improvement projects and so forth. We do want to have a requirement in there that depending on the complexity of the major improvement project, the ten thousand dollar fee could be adjusted to higher amount. And of course, if less than the full amount has been used, then it would be, it would be that amount and, you know, will not be charged anything more than the dollar amount that would do the staff recovery. The second part, your staff report says the MIP, the major improvement project applicant, shall agree to repair, upgrade, replace and/or newly construct the city's public infrastructure. And we're talking about bridges, roadway, right-of-way pavement, asphalt, concrete, driveways, traffic systems, beautification elements, landscape, hardscape, you know, you have, you name it. You know, all of those to the satisfaction of the city engineer, which is me at this time. Next is also the impacted infrastructure, but these are not publicly owned. These are pervaded by the utilities. Again, the same, you know, it could be covering water, sanitary sewer, recycled water, electricity, gas, information technology and so forth. And then on the second page of your staff report, it talks about that maintenance that I talked about of, you know, whatever improvements in the infrastructure that I just mentioned, somebody needs to maintain it. And, you know, if it is impacted by the major project applicant, then, you know, we believe that the city should not bear the cost. So at the end, our recommendation is that the council tonight conduct a public hearing and introduce the first reading by title only, ordinance number eleven ninety-seven dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter twelve point zero eight of title twelve, Laundale Municipal Code establishing encroachment permits for major improvement projects, MIP, to reflect the recent changes in rules, regulations and fees. That concludes the staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of staff report?
Mayor, council, I can add a couple things. This is for major improvement projects?
That's what I was gonna ask you.
The big ones, like for example, not picking on anyone, but let's say they gotta expand a bridge area or cross a major road in the city. So we just wanna preempt, this does not impact residential, small projects, small commercial. This is for major projects.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, an example of projects. Yes, ma'am.
I also have a question. Does, is this also for like someone that's building the Hawthorne Manhattan Street? Those, a big building, like a three, four story?
No, this is, this is for public improvements, someone that needs to build a giant bridge across a roadway.
Got it.
Or build something across our roadways or something that needs a maintenance agreement along areas, large corridors or something?
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. With that, there's no other questions of staff. I'll open, the public hearing is now six fifty-five. The public hearing is now open. If there are any wishing to testify or provide comments in this public hearing. CNN, it is six fifty-five. The public hearing is by close. Bring up the dials for any comments from the council discussion.
I just have one more question. We get to choose if someone decides to do a bridge, what goes on the bridge? Or what inf, what design they decide to put up there?
It would be subject to, you know, all the requirements in the ordinance, but ultimately, authority lies on the council? So say like, for example, someone wanted to build a bridge, you could ask them to put the city's logo on it and deck it out the way you think it'd be appropriate.
Got it.
Okay, very good. Any additional questions? Okay, what is the pleasure this body concerned? Staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney that we approve staff recommendation and seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, before we vote, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to read the ordinance.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Is ordinance number eleven ninety-seven dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laundale, California, amending chapter twelve point zero eight of title twelve of the Laundale Municipal Code establishing encroachment permits for major improvement projects?
Okay, will the council please vote?
For item number eight, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item, item nine. Item nine is also a public hearing for consideration of ordinance number eleven ninety-six dash twenty-three to amend the Hawthorne Boulevard's specific plan to prohibit car wash facilities within the specific plan and also the exemption from CEQA. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project, the proposed project is an amendment to the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan. This comes after the moratorium for car wash facilities that was adopted back in April of 2022. We are, staff put together an ordinance prohibiting car wash facilities within the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan due to the lack of properties that are available for the regional housing needs assessment. Staff took a look at the two square miles of the city and determined that there's already five existing car wash facilities within the city and that the car wash facilities do not conform to the goals and objectives of the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan. In order for this to be able to help the city, staff didn't, well, prohibited car wash facilities within the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan. However, any existing car wash facilities will be considered non-conforming and however, they will not be able to be expanded or redeveloped. So if they wanted a demo or redevelop, they wouldn't be able to do that. They will still be available to build within the other commercial zones, that's C3, C4, but not within the major thoroughfares as Hawthorne Boulevard or Tishan and Redondo Beach Boulevard. And with that, staff concludes the staff report and we are requesting that the city council conduct a public hearing, determine that this project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section five three seven eight and one five zero six one B of CEQA guidelines. And finally, introduce the first reading to, by title, of ordinance eleven ninety-six dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan to prohibit car wash uses. And staff, is available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the staff report?
Oh, questions? So is it allowed in any of the other, like Prairie, Rosecrans, like?
That's correct.
Oh.
And Mr. Mayor and council, just a clarification, they can maintain, operate their existing car washes, do maintenance and cleanup, they just can't expand. We do allow some non-conforming, some upgrades too. They're allowed to do some things without expanding. There's a determination in our current code that's codified by the council years back to allow some of these non-conforming uses. So they have some wriggle room, just like the residential do.
Thank you. Okay, if there are not, if there aren't any additional questions, I will open the public hearing. It's now seven o'clock. The public hearing is open. Are there any wishing to testify or to provide comments in this public hearing? CNN, it is now seven o'clock. The public hearing is closed. Bring to the dials for comment.
I have some comments. Is there a reason why there wasn't, since we have existing ones, like a number set, like no more than three or two versus banning them all? Because I'm not so much thinking that the needs now, but in the future. I guess if the needs change where there's not as much housing needed, you know, say the birth rate is on decline. So maybe in, I don't know how many years, you're not gonna need as much housing potentially. We would just have, or the council in that era would have to change the zoning again?
Yeah, if the council would desire for it to be, instead of not allowed completely, but have a certain amount allowed, we could do that, definitely.
I just was wondering if there was a reason why there was, since there already, there wasn't like a cap on it, like no more than three and then the other ones go, I just didn't know the rationale behind it.
No, nothing specific. It's just we went based off of what we had done in the past with the other project and what the reasoning was is the Rena numbers and most of the housing is going within the Hawthorne plan. So we decided to, you know, just not approve it. I mean, prohibit, prohibit within that area.
Okay. Okay, but then there's also, you could still potentially have one, but in a different area.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense and balancing it out.
Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
The car wash on Hawthorne, let's say they decide to leave, do we prohibit whoever's coming, let's say another car wash company purchases it? Are we prohibiting them from functioning in that place or that's still a car wash? So they do have six months of non-conforming for them to, if somebody wants to come in and take over the business, they have six months for them to get a business license. And if, I mean, if it goes over like six months, then we would look at it depending on the situation.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Okay, what is the pleasure this body concerned? Item number nine. I'll make a motion if the players don't wanna say anything, except staff recommendation.
My computer wasn't working. I'll second it.
Okay, okay. So the motion's been made by Kearney that we adopt staff recommendations and seconded by Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, CNN, let's see, is there anything that the city attorney needs to read?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number eleven ninety-six dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laundale, California, amending the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan to remove car wash uses within the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan and a finding of categorical exemption from CEQA.
Okay, will the council please vote?
For item number nine, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number ten, mid-year budget update for fiscal year 2022, '23.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you. So here we are. This is the mid-year budget for fiscal 2022, '23. This is at the halfway point, which was December 31, 2022. So all so all the data and numbers here are as of that point, December thirty-first. So first thing I wanted to go over is how we ended up with the fund balance. To start with the twenty-two, twenty-three, because when we did the budget, we didn't have the actuals number yet, now that we do, we got the audit done, you know, the report was issued back in December, and the general fund balance came in at twenty-six point five million. This was compared to twenty-four and a half million when we did the budget, so we came in two million higher. So we're starting the year off twenty-two, twenty-three with a general fund balance of twenty-six and a half million. We are expecting revenues of eighteen point nine million, expenditures of eighteen point four, and ending the June thirty, twenty-three with twenty-seven million general fund balance. This is also in the chart on the staff report to see kind of the difference between where we started the estimate and where we're at today. Overall, general fund revenues are forty-six percent, are at forty-six percent, and expenditures are thirty-nine percent of our original general fund balance. Some expenditures will come in later in the year, so that's why it's a little low right now, but they will be caught up. To go over revenue numbers, currently, at December thirty-one, our general fund revenue is about fifteen point six percent higher than where we were at last year, so that's good. And part of that, you know, the most significant changes were sales and use tax. This came in at eleven point five percent or a hundred and thirty-three thousand better than where we were at last year. Then along with that is a Measure L, sales tax, which is the additional three quarters cent sales tax that Longdale has. So that came in better by eight percent or eighty-one thousand. And then the other one is motor vehicle and lieu of property tax. This is basically the property taxes, has a long fancy name, but that came in better by six percent, a hundred and thirty thousand. Other than that, there was also some increases in planning fees, building permit fees, and plant check fees. So all of these, you know, contributed to the additional fifteen point six percent. In total, so we are recommending an additional six hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two increase in general fund revenues, and this comes from the following six sources. Sales and use tax, we're recommending a hundred and fifty thousand increase. And this is due to, you know, we had really good, strong first half sales, coupled with inflation, you know, prices, everything has gone up, so therefore, sales tax is also increasing. And also, we're taking, you know, HDL, our third, third-party consultant, these are based off of their numbers as well. And again, along with that, increase in the sales tax, the Measure L, the three quarters cent sales, a hundred and nineteen thousand, we're recommending increase in there. And then recommending a five thousand increase in court and traffic fines. These are basically our false alarm fees, we didn't have anything budgeted for it when we did the budget. We've collected, I believe, just under three thousand so far, so I'm recommending a five thousand revenue budget on that one. And then we have other financing sources, I'm recommending a two hundred and ten thousand dollar increase. This is basically our interest income from investments. You know, you know, we keep a close eye on this, we watch it daily pretty much, but interest rates have been rising, so we're doing really good there. We keep an eye on, we make investments as needed, you know. The goal is to not really just look at how much invest, interest we can make, but make sure that there's enough cash on hand with liquidity, and that we are in a safe place. We want to minimize risk, at the same time, try to maximize as much as we can. But number one goal is really having cash liquid on hand. But, you know, because of the favorable interest rates, we are seeing that we will beat our budget by two hundred and ten thousand. And then the other item I have for this increase is licenses and permits. It's just a small increase of four thousand, basically from tobacco licenses and dog licenses. Tobacco, we didn't have anything really budgeted, so we see fifteen hundred coming in. And also, dog licenses, we've collected over our budget by twenty-five hundred, so combined an additional four thousand for the year. And then there's, there's an, there's a other revenues, a hundred and eighty-five thousand is what we're recommending. There were, so this is made up of code enforcement tickets, donations, insurance rebates, and other miscellaneous items that come in. So there were two cases that closed, code cases that closed, that brought each brought in forty thousand. These were not budgeted, so we're adding those in for eighty thousand total. And then we also collected a ninety-nine thousand dollar impact fee. So these combined to the a hundred and eighty-five thousand that we're recommending. So overall, for revenues, we see a budget increase of the six hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. So that's revenues. Moving into expenditures, again, as I said, thirty-nine percent, so we'll catch up to, you know, being closer to a hundred percent by end of the year. Not much of an increase here, we're only seeing about twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars in the general fund as an increase. And two items make up this increase, which is basically for the sheriff's cost for fireworks suppression, and then also the rising fuel costs. I mean, as everybody knows, gas prices are going up, so that's affecting the city as well. So those two combined, the twenty-one thousand. And that's really it for expenditures. You'll see in the, that memo that I have in there, there's a long list of increases. Most of, all of that, except for these two items, are for the reclass of the, there's, we did a three hundred thousand dollar reclass when we did the budget, and that was for the salary, based off of the class and comp study that was approved. So we budgeted just a flat three hundred thousand for all salaries and benefits as an increase. So that's being reclassed to the different departments. And so, yeah, that's basically for expenditures. The twenty-one thousand is what the increase, the net increase will be. The other main item for the budget is the ARPA funding. So the city received seven point seven million, all of it is available for general government services as per the final rule by the federal government. Currently, we have six hundred thousand that's been budgeted, these are for various capital items throughout, for the various city buildings. And then in addition, we're asking for another five hundred and fifty-five thousand. And this is going to be used for vehicles for public works, MSD, and general government. You know, all these vehicles, they'll be used to provide government services for the city. And then also, we're asking for hiring of a homeless outreach coordinator, armed private security services, I think that was discussed in an earlier session, and also cleaning and disinfecting at the community center. Again, all these are related to ARPA, they're all going to be towards general government for the city in total, so they would all qualify. And just as a kind of reminder about the ARPA funding, needs to be appropriated by December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four, and fully spent by December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six. So we do need to start spending down that money, or else they're going to ask for it back. And that's all that I have, that concludes my report, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, I have a quick question. The homeless outreach coordinator, should we fund it, is that, are we looking for part-time? Not part-time, is that temporary?
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for the ques- we were going to go with the code enforcement officer, but given that my director, after spending four and a half hours every day, Monday through Thursday, I thought it'd be more prudent to switch it to a homeless outreach officer, or we would call it maybe a public safety. It would not just only be dedicated to homeless, but that would be their primary duties, but they could also do other things like parking and code. But their primary duties would be homeless outreach. We have a need, the council wants to move forward with providing services and addressing the issues that we get complaints about. So this officer, we could envision it being a public safety officer is what we're thinking out loud. We need to get Michael off the street, he's the only one that does the homeless outreach, and he's, needs to be inside his department, running the operations, instead of out on the street for four and a half hours a day. So we're recommending that we go with this, and right now, we're using ARPA monies to pay for it. We have to identify some other grant monies and opportunities, we've been talking to other folks. I talked to the City of Carson, they're funding it right now, they have two, I talked to, because you guys sent me to the meeting, so I went to city manager's conference, and the, City of Carson has two homeless outreach people right now that they've hired. So we need to start doing something, because we don't have staff here to dedicate it to that, to do homeless outreach. So I would vision someone we're hiring with like a cross between some code enforcement background with a social work background. Because I've been out there, I do it every day, whenever I have to. And it's, you need someone that knows how to deal with the, the issues, the trauma that these folks deal with. And we need someone that's trained, that can help them, and get them services, to get them off the street.
So, thank you for that explanation. My only concern with that would be, I'm, I'm in favor of having a homeless outreach person a hundred percent, but the multitasking, of course, I'm a little, kind of leery about. I, I would feel probably a little more comfortable with the outreach person actually focusing solely on outreach for the homeless, because it seems like to me there's a lot of work to be done there. They're going to be switching hats and doing parking and other stuff like that. Now, to have the background in law, in, code enforcement, I think is great, or what have you, but if they're going to be switching hats, and that's going to take them away from the homeless outreach, I think there's enough work just there, focusing on homeless outreach. And then at the same time, it'd allow us to, to actually, to be able to measure the, the success, or the effectiveness, I should say, because if the person find him or her spending time on non-homeless issues, then it's harder to really say whether or not it was, you know, success. And especially once the money runs out, the ARPA funds run out, and if we decide we want to fund it with general funds or what have you, then what matrix would we be using to measure it if, if they're diverted onto other activities?
Mr. Mayor and Council, so we're, you know, I've been out there, actually doing the hands-on, as you know, you guys tell me, you go, hey, let's staff do it, but sometimes I get out there. There may not be enough to keep this person busy, so that's why we were kind of thinking to leave it flexible, but it's solely up to the council. There's definitely a lot of work in providing, finding services, I witnessed that this last Monday. It's, and my deputy city manager, we had a hard time finding service for a young lady that was here up front. So it definitely is very time-consuming. So they could, if we could get them in, the problem is with our current homeless population, at least on the Hawthorne, they seem to not want a lot of services, so they kind of just move along. But it's totally up to the council how you want to, I envision this position, though, to be Monday through, Friday, eight to five. You have someone here at least five days a week to address it, and then the security can do the nighttime, and then, you know, the sheriff's can go anywhere, yeah.
Well, I don't think we have to flesh it out right now, but I just wanted to bring that, that to your attention. Thank you for that discussion. Anyone else have any thing else they want to add on this mid-year budget report? It's a great bud- budget review. Mrs. Good's going on a good trajectory. Do I, do I hear a motion or something coming up?
Let me see.
You don't have to. It's just a report, we can receive and file.
Yeah.
The budget needs to be approved, the amendment.
No, she wants something.
It's not just a receipt and file.
Yes, and we do require a motion, because it requires budget amendments that need to be approved by council. Thank you.
Our motion to approve the revised budget.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Quaver that we approve the revised budget and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote.
For item number ten, the motion passes unanimously.
All righty, thank you, madam. Item number eleven. I think this is the one, I'm going to recuse myself, I can't recall whether or not I have a conflict, I haven't determined that, I think this is the company, I'm not totally sure, but I'm going to recuse myself on this item. Let's have the staff report.
Yes, sir.
Good evening again, city council. The item before you has to do with the contract we have with Street Sweeping Services with Clean Streets. My understanding is that they have been providing this service, which totals a hundred and fifty-seven and some change curb miles per week sweeping for the past twenty-one years. We know that their current contract expires on February twenty-eighth. So at this point, I'm recommending the city council to approve a month-to-month base, basis with the company until we take the next step.
And Mayor and Council, the next step will be to do an RFP process, as Ahmad has mentioned, they've been with us for twenty-plus years. Couple of years ago, we did an RFP process, they only applied, but we need to put another one out. And we don't want, we want to continue with the services until, you know, they may apply as well, so, but we need to get it out there.
And we do have budget until the end of the fiscal year, so.
Yes, ma'am.
No questions, I was just going to say, I'll make the motion that we approve the extension.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Did you have a question, I'm sorry?
I, I, I did have a question.
I'll withdraw my second.
Sorry.
Question first.
My question is, what's the time period for the RFP? Are we going to start putting it out in March first, or how long are we going to?
Fairly quickly, fairly quickly. I want to, if, if I were to guess, probably a couple of months will be out.
Prior to the new budget?
Yes, 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 absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a, a motion's made by Suarez that we approve the staff recommendation and seconded by Kearney? Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, will the council please?
For item number eleven, the motion passes unanimously, well, not sorry, unanimously, sorry, with four votes yes, one abstention from Mayor Paul and Miles.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item is the city manager's report. Let's hear from Mr. City Manager. Right? Right? Oh, that was eleven. It says city manager.
Yeah, we want city manager report.
It says city manager's report.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. So, I have a couple, I have a couple items to announce. Let me be, I'll be pretty brief here. We have, just want to, I sent you guys on the email about the Longdale Little League, they needed some help. So I reached out to our local developer, and he happens to be working on some units down the street, and he has a large lift. We talked to our RPC chairman, who's also helps run the Longdale Little League with George, and they put him in connection with the developer, and the developer was out there helping him change out the lights for your charge, and provided the electrician. So just wanted to give you an update on that. Last week, we had a challenging situation that occurred out front of city hall. We, I just wanted to let the council know, we reached out and did all we could for this individual. They had some challenges, they were homeless. We worked with Gardena Memorial Hospital to get this individual placed. It was a very challenging situation, the staff all pulled together, and we worked with getting that person, I know some people, we discovered, Ray Latton, myself, and Deputy City Manager, that it's very challenging calling different agencies for assistance. But I just want to give a shout out to Gardena Memorial, because they helped out immensely with this individual, and helped get them placed and into a shelter. So I wanted to let the council know, that was one positive thing. And then the cleanup, I want to announce that the cleanup is cleanup week. We're still going to, we're recommendation of the mayor pro temp, we're still adding some additional recommendations to do outreach, but it's from March eleventh through the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. So folks, we have things listed on our website and our socials outlining those things. And then for the Metro Meeting, just as a reminder to everyone, we're having the meeting, public hearing, Saturday, February twenty-fifth, from ten AM to one PM at Longdale High School. And that concludes all my comments, that's it.
Any questions of the city manager's report? I, I do have, want to add something, go ahead.
It's not a question, it's just to add, for the cleanup week, one of the big benefits is the bulky items, so you can leave them. I know we have a big issue with people leaving bulky items, so this time, you can actually leave them, they'll get picked up, you don't have to place an order, that's all I wanted to say.
And I'm, I'm going to recommend, in consultation with Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman, that those who was involved with the, the situation that the city manager just kind of outlined, he didn't go into the details, that was a really touchy situation, and the staff really handled that situation with the utmost professionalism. We can't be any more, you know, proud of the staff, city manager and the staff, and all those that were involved. And I want to entertain doing, not necessarily a certificate, it could be a certificate, or it could be a letter, or whatever we do, a recognition, you know, to, to put in your folder. You want something to put on your wall, though, right?
Next to your ninety-nine cent things you got to put.
That's, that's an inside joke. Guys been, ever been in his office, he has like, you know, twenty, you know, diplomas, right?
None of them has their name on it, it's all different names.
On the wall. But we'll prepare something for the next council meeting, if that's the, okay, with the, with the board. But we'll prepare something for the next council meeting, if that's okay with the board. Okay, yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you for that report. And let's go to city council members' report. Anything to report, Councilwoman? Hoffman-Gorman?
All right, so last week, on the 15th of February, I attended the Metro Meeting at Longdale High. And on the 16th, I attended the Metro Meeting Zoom call from 11:00 to 1:00. And also, Councilmember Pat Kearney and I both attended the California Contract Cities Meeting for the month. And it was to honor the hero of Monterey Park, which was really exciting. You couldn't ask Brandon. And he could not have been a more humble individual, just outstanding. A true hero, that's for sure. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to wait till we get down to item number 14 where we speak, city council. Where are now?
Oh, oh, you know what, yeah.
I know it's Tuesday.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. The councilwoman jumped the gun. No, I told you, I prompted you to do that. Thank you for that. The item, item number 12, I'm actually going to ask for this to be removed off the agenda for further consideration, possibly at a later date. The Russell Westbrook statue item, if that's okay with the board. Okay, so we will remove that agenda. Oh, okay, like chickens, like chickens. For some reason, I was thinking Roscoe's because I met Roscoe's earlier today. Like, okay, Roscoe's is following me. Okay, so this next item, chickens in residential areas, a historic review. No, I say it's a history report. Okay, let's have the.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report is based on a conversation that we had had with the council regarding the current situation with the prices of the eggs. So we did, I put together a small little list of the history of chickens in the city of Longdale. So as you may know, the city of Longdale used to be a predominantly agriculture-based city. And crops were allowed, like, in sheep, poultry, raised on small farms, et cetera, we, et cetera. We actually had A1 parcels back in the day where we actually had residential along with small farms. But as well as that, during this time, there was, in 1959, when the city became incorporated, we actually adopted the LA County zoning ordinance. And at this time, the zoning ordinance allowed these to be, these uses to be in A1 zones, so agriculture zones with residential, as long as they were about 50 feet away from residential properties. So they were allowed, it's just they weren't allowed necessarily in residential areas, but in small farm areas. Following that, the first ordinance was adopted right after the city became incorporated, which was ordinance number one, which adopted the LA County zoning ordinance along with those regulations. In 1960, there was ordinance number 28 that was adopted as part of the Longdale Municipal Code, which amended sections of the LA County zoning ordinance related to poultry. And in this new ordinance, they allowed the keeping or having chicken coops foul and et cetera that were allowed, as long as it was 150 feet away from any residential areas. Then in 1985, the city put together another ordinance allowing the keeping of poultry, dealing, et cetera, but only in commercial and light manufacturer, light manufacturing areas or heavy industrial areas. In this case, well, they didn't mention anything related to the residential. However, we're still going by the LA County ordinance that was adopted and amended by ordinance 28. So in 1960. In 1960, 1986, that's when they, the city actually codified their ordinance. So finally, we put together the city of Longdale's ordinance. And we didn't, we stopped going by the LA County zoning ordinance. So during this time, there was a lot of zoning ordinance updates, not just the poultry, but other updates. So they put all those together and finally, they codified Title 17, which is our current zoning ordinance. So in these, during this time, they actually also included design guidelines for residential areas and animal control regulations, which is, goes into what we have currently in our zoning, Title 17 zoning ordinance. And then in 1989, they finally added the ordinance amending for specific animals to be removed for residential areas and that were noisy and that were close to neighborhood and would cause a disturbance within neighborhood areas. In this specific ordinance, we actually see that specific animals such as poultry and other wild animals were actually written on the ordinance in 1989. Once it was updated for our current ordinance, then those specific animals were removed from that ordinance. But it was used more of a broader way to say, well, if any of these animals are excessively noisy, then they wouldn't be allowed within an area, a residential area. And then there is a code section of the Health and Safety Code of the LA County, which we actually adopted by reference. And that is more specific to certain animals, such as birds foul. And it only is allowed within 35 feet of residential area. So if it's more than, or 100 feet from any schools or hospital buildings, et cetera. So it's more specific on what type of agricultural animals, such as chickens, we can have within residential areas. The issue with the current, the current population right now of the city is that most, we're overpopulated right now, we're dense enough where everything's been already, I'm missing the word. I'm sorry. We have already been developed, I'm sorry, I forgot the word. So everything's already been developed. So most of the parcels here, we don't have any empty parcels, but the parcel in Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Hawthorne Boulevard. So most of the, most of the city is residential zone R2. And they wouldn't meet the regulations for, for people to be able to keep poultry right now. However, there is also a possibility that the council may want to change the zoning ordinance and allow maybe a smaller distance between residential areas for that to happen. But as it currently stands, it's not too specific on certain animals anymore. It's just more like the noise of the animals within a neighborhood area. And then it goes into the Health and Safety Code. So it would be up to the council if they wanted to amend that. And that concludes the report.
Okay, thank you for that report. Any questions or discussions?
Yeah, I'll just, I'm the one that had brought this one forward because someone had asked me, and it's been a big discussion about the cost of eggs, which, you know, it may not be permanent. But I guess my, my question was, or when I was looking at it, apparently Hawthorne allows them. And I think they allow to a certain number, I think it's like 10. City of Redondo Beach also allows them with a permit. And I'm not quite sure of what their distances are, but I would think that Hawthorne kind of has similar, they allow them in residential. And so, and some of their properties might be similar to ours. And so that's why it came up. I'm curious to see what they require. Because I would think that if someone wanted one or two chickens, you know, I wouldn't see that as a big issue, you know, definitely not whole farm and, you know, doing that. But if someone wanted, you know, one or two, so I, but I didn't also want to spend a lot of staff time if everybody else was completely like against something like that. And it wasn't specifically for roosters and hens, just for hens, not roosters because they're the ones that cause the excessive noise. And so that's why I asked to put it on the agenda. I would be curious, but also want to be respectful. If no one else wants to discuss it, I don't want to spend staff time drafting and ordering and so on and so. I don't know what my colleagues thought about this one.
Any discussion?
I mean.
Clearly, the males are the problem.
Yes.
That's what you're getting at. Yes, ma'am.
I mean, if we could get more specific from other cities, I mean, we're allowing rabbits.
They don't make noise.
I know they don't make noise, but if we're, hens don't make noise. It's the rooster that makes the noise. But I thought you needed a rooster or the hens to put a net, lay a net.
No, no.
That's just for the, to get a baby chick.
Okay, then if it's just hens.
And by the way, we, we all just, well, some of us just learned that. So she was the only one, she's not the only one that just learned that, so.
Yeah, I thought you needed the male, you know, but I guess not.
I did, too.
So if, whenever staff has time, I'm okay, we research it a little bit more.
I guess to see what their, what their requirements with the rest of the space is in residential properties.
I don't think we could have them in our apartments or anything like that. But you have to have a certain yardage. You can't have them in maybe duplex, but single home family with a backyard, a big backyard.
I mean, I was in Lincoln Heights over the weekend, and there was definitely some roosters in Lincoln Heights. I didn't hear any hens, but there was several roosters. This is midday, too, like 2:00 o'clock.
They don't care what time of day it is. They'll grow in the middle of the night if they see it in light out.
And I just have one concern with the bird, the bird flu, whatever it's called now, that's going around. The big hat, chicken farms are having to slaughter so many chickens because of this flu, bird. I think it's bird flu. And that's why the cost of eggs went up, it wasn't due, nothing to do with chickens. There's a big pandemic, I know Foster Farm had to slaughter so many, what's the other one? There's two of them, the other one, other one.
Zaki.
Pardon me?
Zaki.
There's still another one, too, Purdue. Purdue had to slaughter some of theirs, too, because I don't want to see any of that. I don't care if it's two, or three, or four. I don't want to see any of that bird flu in the city of Longdale because it does affect other animals, just besides chickens. If that's the case, I want goats to do my yard work.
I'm not bothered by a chicken here and there because it's food always for me to know it. So as soon as I'm not making a noise, I'm not bothering.
We can still bring it back and see Hawthorne. I know some of their east side of Prairie, there's a lot over there. But those house, those house, the housing complexes open and they have more yardage between houses.
But their ordinance doesn't, I'd have to look at the specifics because I don't, didn't see in the ordinance, but it didn't seem to designate space or anything. So maybe that's what we look at, is what they're requiring. And also Redondo, too, because they do allow it with permits. The hen. They have an excessive noise ordinance where apparently if you have an animal, it can't make excessive noise more than five minutes within the hour. So that's kind of one of their other ways of regulating noises. So I don't think you can have a rooster because it would seem like it would exceed that. But they do, like, you can even regulate the dogs if they're barking too much with some of their ordinances. So I think that's how they get around it. Okay, so do you have direction to?
It's receiving files, isn't it?
It's receiving files, but we could bring it back with council direction to do additional research and bring it back at a later date. If the council's comfortable with that, we can look at other cities and.
And if there's fees, how much the fees are?
Before you go on, Mayor and Council, I just want to add a little historical planning background. So if you read the book Metropolis by William Fulton, they'll tell you the story of Los Angeles. And we all know the story. They were selling these lots, long, short, narrow lots. As the folks came from during the Great Depression, they moved to Los Angeles area. That's why the lots are narrow and long, so they can have little ranch houses, small little houses in the front, and then farming in the back. So that's how originally they were all laid out. All of the Bay, Bell area, the South Gate, Downey, Long, all these areas were laid out that way during that time. So that they, we were all originally little small ranchettes here when we started. That's why the lots are all narrow, even in Downey, Narwhal, they all have narrow lots. And so they can allow small, large families on these big lots that can do agriculture because they came from areas typically like Oklahoma where they did agriculture. Just a little historical thing.
The direction? Okay, let's move on to comments from the mayor and council members. Councilman, do you have anything else you want to add?
No.
I think Rhonda said Mike Partier went to the Contract Cities and met Brandon Te. Nice young man, he got a big award, he got all kinds of stuff like churras on his wall. With that, I pass it on.
Okay, Councilwoman Quavis?
Quavis, I'm over here.
You're over here now? When did you switch? Councilwoman Swer.
So I did attend the South Bay Cities Council of Government Steering Committee, which makes the agenda for the Board of Directors. Alert, they will be talking about Metro at their next traffic meeting. And it will be combined with the steering committee. So I will keep an eye out and also let you know of the date. It should be the second Monday in March. They can't discuss it at the regular meeting because they don't have meeting March because of the General Assembly. So I think at that time, they're going to be talking whether we want to make a recommendation to which route. So it'll be good to have a presence at that meeting. I did attend the online Metro one that they did last week as well. Really great questions from the residents. I was pretty happy that we had some Longdale residents ask some very good questions. And then I also attended, it was also through the South Bay Cities Council of Government. They have the Department of Mental Health speak about homeless services. It seems like there's kind of a big disconnect from what the other cities were saying. They're having trouble getting mental health services. And so we're hoping to continue the discussion with them to try and get more of a presence. But, you know, we'll see how that works out. And then I think that was it, with that, I'll pass it on.
Okay, Councilwoman Quavis?
I attended the 15th, the Metro Sea Line Meeting. I want to thank all the residents that attended and voiced their concern. We need to be heard by Metro, that we don't want them here. So please go to the next meeting on Saturday, the 25th, what time?
10:00 to 1:00.
10:00 to 1:00. We need to show them that Metro is not welcome in Longdale. And they need to listen to us. I, that was the only meeting I was able to attend. I did hear that on February 11th, there was a rally. El Segundo had a rally at Franklin Park in Redondo regarding the Metro Sea Line project. Those were, that rally was for, against Metro. And it was well-attended. I wasn't able to make it, but a couple of people that I know attended, and it was well-attended. So there are residents of Redondo that do not want Metro. So if I hear of another rally, I will notify you guys. I do have a question for Public Works, or I don't know, maybe Sean, you could answer it. Who cleans? could answer it. Who cleans our sidewalks in front of those properties that are closed on Hawthorne Boulevard? Uh, there are several properties that are closed, and when you walk on Hawthorne, there's trash everywhere, and especially on the weekends.
So we have, uh, Public Works staff handles that, or MSD, when they go by from the homeless, uh, outreach, usually, not all the time, but the, some of the folks leave stuff behind. So we pick it up, staff go out, when we do the bulky items, they drive around. And we can, we also, if there's specific properties of an eye, uh, mind, we can go and steam clean the sidewalks as well.
It's not so much bulky items, it's trash, like cups and Kleenex and all that trash that collects on the sidewalk. You have a couple of businesses that are boarded up, and it seems like that's the, the focus, where people throw all their junk.
We, we can send Public Works out there to, and, uh, the, the gentlemen, like, staff that go out and do the bulky item pickups can go by and I'll have them go by some of the properties. Jared has them identified already.
Okay.
That, and Michael too, and we can make sure they pick up those items too, and then call it in. Michael's out every day with staff, so he can just call those in when he sees them, and then Public Works can follow up.
Yeah, it's, uh, mostly one forty-seventh to Rose Grove. Um, there's a laundry man, liquor store, and then there's a boarded up business in that area. Um, and it's, on the weekends, we kind of walk Hawthorne, and that's where we noticed a lot of trash.
Yes, with that particular property, we suspended their permits, and then we asked them to go out there and clean up, I'll have staff follow up with them. And then, uh, Michael as well, if you can follow up on that, and, um, because we've already, we've already talked to that property owner, we know there's some issues over there.
Thank you.
Yeah, you, you are, thank you. Yeah, some of those items are kinda hard to detect from, um, you know, from a car, from the, um, city, uh, city truck. Um, I walk the city, um, all the time, as do some of the, the council, and you can see that ground level. Um, I would suggest that at some point, maybe the staff, um, should actually walk the Boulevard, because there's one location, I can't remember, it's like, um, well, it's, it's, it's an auto store, I'm not gonna say the name of the store, uh, because they may not necessarily be responsible for it, um, but it's constantly trash in the, in the, um, the flower, it's not called flower, beans, what do you call the things there? Yeah, the trees, the wells.
Yes, plantar wells.
Yeah, plantar well, it's constantly, um, are kinda cracked there. And, um, and you, you won't ever see that if you're driving through. It looks like, you know, it's, it's okay until you get out and start walking. So that might be an approach we might, uh, need to take. Well, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I did attend the Metro meeting, Sea Line meeting as, as well, um, in-person meeting at the, um, the high school, Longdale, um, high school. Uh, we had a pretty, pretty good, um, crowd. Um, I, I definitely, um, would, uh, hope that we'd, we would have had more. We had a lot of people during the viewing, uh, where people came and they saw the, you know, the, I guess.
Renderings.
The renderings and, um, and the displays and stuff like this, kinda like an open house. But then a lot of them kinda left, um, after, looking at the, um, the rendering, so I'm not really sure if that, what that meant, or what have you. Um, but I do appreciate those who, um, did have the time, um, to spend, um, at the meeting, and those who provided public comments, so that, um, our voices, um, are heard, um, from Metro. Um, this is something, you know, like I said, that, um, we don't want it, we don't need it. Um, I can't tell you how many people, I can't tell you, there's like four or five people that said that, that's exactly, um, what they're feeling about this project, and mainly because it does not bring any economic, um, development opportunities to the city of Longdale. It's a, a pass-through, um, proposition, um, and we, of course, have to, um, be concerned with all the environmental, um, um, impacts. Um, of course, um, during the, the process, the environmental, um, impact review, um, process, um, they're gonna allegedly mitigate those issues or what have you. But you, there's some issues you can't mitigate, right? Um, you can't mitigate, you know, the, the fact that you, you, you would have this structure going through a residential community, if that's, if it goes through, um, the road. You still don't interface the fact that you lose the green space or whatever, you can't mitigate those, um, those issues or what have you. So this is something that we'll continue to, um, continue to, to focus on until we are, are, are heard, um, in this issue. And so I just wanna urge those who have the opportunity, uh, to come out, um, Saturday, um, February twenty-fifth, and let your voices be heard, because even if you don't get on the mic and speak your presence, your presence says something, because we know you could have been, you know, anywhere, including in front of the television, right? Um, relaxing, you know, after, you know, on the weekend or what have you, uh, after working, um, all week. So, uh, we do appreciate that, and I do continue to urge people, um, and our residents, um, to do so as well. I also attended the Zoom, uh, meeting, um, as well, to see how many people were on the Zoom and what the discussion was, see if there was anything different, you know, that we didn't learn at the, at the in-person meeting. Um, and then Sunday, I, I had a impromptu meeting with a small group of, um, residents, um, that's concerned about the, um, the alternative going down the, the road, which is Condon, um, that they're, they're concerned about that issue. So I had an impromptu meeting, uh, with them. It's kind of mini rally, you know, if you will. Um, so that's that, that's, that's the Metro, um, Sea Line. Next meeting, September twenty-fifth, from ten to one. Um, where is it again?
Longdale High.
Longdale High, Longdale High School.
Number one school.
Yeah, Longdale High School. Attend if you can, and if you cannot, you still are able, you, you're still able to submit your written comments. So, uh, don't be discouraged if you can't make it, because your, your, your calendar won't allow it. You can go on the, the website and submit your written comments, and these comments, they have to, um, respond to in their environmental, um, um, documents. They have to address, um, those comments. So I suggest that you get your comments in, um, in written form, if you're not able to attend, um, this Saturday. And with that, that's all I have.
Robert, did you, question? Rhonda, didn't you say they give you one minute to speak there?
Yes.
So get all your notes, compress them, you have one minute to speak.
Yeah.
But if you're submitting online, isn't it March twenty-seventh, we have until, what's the deadline in which to do this?
It is March, I don't have it in front of me, but it is March, uh, twenty-seventh. Let me double check the.
But you could also cheat the system. They give you one minute per little card that you fill out. But if you fill out a card, you go up and then come back two, three minutes later with another little card to talk another minute. There is a cheating the system.
Unfortunately, my angst on that is the fact that Robert and I sit on a committee in which we were formulating this event, and never once did they tell us they were going to do a one-minute. I went up to the Metro representative and suggested, and I was polite, asking for a minimum of three minutes. And I even explained, for a person to come and stand in front of a mic, it's gonna take thirty seconds for them to get organized, to get their thoughts together and start presenting. They wouldn't budge. One minute is what they wanted to give us. And again, it just goes to show you, Metro is not Longdale's friends in any way.
That brings me to, to another point. I'm not totally convinced that, at that hearing, that we received a fair hearing, because, um, there was a medical incident from one of the residents, and the resident had to be taken to the hospital. But instead of, and our, our prayers, of course, is with the residents of speedy recovery, but instead of continuing the meeting, Metro decided, um, to no longer, um, take testimony. I feel that that was a disjustice, because we, up until that point, only a few people had the opportunity to speak, um, one. And two, that was not a meeting, that was a public hearing. So in a public hearing is, is handled a little different than a meeting. So your comments that you make at a public hearing are for the records, and then those public, those comments are to be, um, addressed, um, you know, by the, uh, Metro. Unlike, uh, unlike a, a, a meeting, there's more formalities with the public hearing. So I'm not sure if we've got a, a full and fair hearing, and that's what I'm concerned, concerned about. And that was kinda disturbing, that there was several people, um, prepared to speak, but the, um, whoever's in charge decided to, to end the meeting. I don't know if we can do anything about that, if we can get a redo, or anything about the, uh.
I mean, Mr. Mayor, we can ask him, but, uh, you know, their, their dates are set in stone, but I'll, I could send an email to Metro.
Yes, please do.
And then just confirmation, and I got the city attorney in my ear, she, we have to be careful, because it's not on the agenda, but, uh.
Okay.
Uh, it does end the comment period, ends on March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Yes, okay. All right. So that was my comments. Okay. Any other comment before we adjourn? Okay, okay, uh, it's now time to adjourn. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty PM, Monday, March sixth, twenty twenty-three, and these here chambers is now seven fifty-four, and this meeting is adjourned.